At the time having arrived and a quorum being present, this meeting of the Cecil Township Supervisors is hereby called to order. Will you join us in a salute our nation's flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Carol, let the record show that Supervisors Cassiola, Agizio, Fisher, Barney, and Shafani are in attendance. In addition, Dawn Janus, our Township Manager, Jack King, our Assistant Township Manager and Director of Planning, Sean Bukavinski, our Chief of Police, Jeff Huesman, Deputy Director of Public Works, Fire Chief Ted Wolford, Dan Miller, the Director at South Bridge EMS, and our Township Engineer, Dan Dazeroth, and our Township Solicitor, Gretchen Moore. So you're aware, this is the time where you can come up to make or give us comments from any item you see on the agenda. Again, if it's unrelated to the agenda, we have a space at the end of the meeting for that. So anybody have any comments on or questions on agenda items? Please come up to the microphone. Well, you can talk from there. Jack, can you give the remote one? Thank you, Jack. Name and address first, please.
Darla Kalanovic, 32nd Street, Lawrence.
Thank you.
Okay, here you have me on the agenda.
Well, we try to keep the name out of it.
Well...
We have an address on the agenda. But go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You condemned my home today.
Condemned it?
Yes, sir.
Did you read the agenda item?
Yes, I did.
Okay, well just...
But they came out today and condemned it.
Who's "they"?
Code enforcement.
They did?
And they sent...
If this works and it gets exterminated, if that issue goes away, that goes away then too, right? It's another condemn... Please, everybody wants to hear.
Right, so code enforcement is going through its process, which one of its options is condemnation. What you have on the agenda tonight is to go into court for equitable relief to do, you know, extermination and cleanup. They're different things. Condemnation does not necessarily mean it gets abated. It could certainly, and that's I'm sure what the township would hope, but...
Would that help? If we can help get rid of the vermin or the rodent problem?
Yeah, because all of Lawrence is polluted with them. I have plenty neighbors and friends who have told me about it. And you're helping Muse out, but you're not helping us out, and this has been going on for two, three years.
Well, we weren't asking you to contribute to that.
Oh, yes, you were. I'm paying a thousand dollar fine.
That's a separate issue with the magistrate. This issue tonight is just to be allowed to exterminate the rodents.
As long as it's not the poison that my neighbor illegally went onto my property and put around my yard. It's very poisonous, and I had to move out along with my dogs. If it's not that kind and it's outside the fence, I don't care.
Okay, we would not do what your neighbors did. If we have a professional exterminator out there, they don't put poison out that would poison pets.
Yeah, well, he did. And I think he poisoned my neighbor.
I'm sorry about your neighbor doing that.
Do you know where they would put it?
No. We wouldn't even try to send our own guys out there to do it because it's, I mean, it's, obviously, the neighbors say a lot of the rats that they're getting are coming from your property.
Yeah.
All right, but the point is, professionals apparently know what they're doing. At least, we hope the person we hire will, assuming this motion passes. Let us at least try to take care of that first.
All right.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who has a question on the agenda? Okay, we're gonna pay a bill for sure.
AC Rowland, 52 Sycamore Street, in regards to the Coomer Road pavement. I just want to say, great job to all of the township, all the guys. Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Daniel, for getting it all together. I know there's some issues with lines that people aren't getting the grade of the road there, but great job, and that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, AC. Anybody else? I am gonna read all these announcements. We're apparently streaming live, and I know you might have an agenda in front of you, and you don't need me to read to you, but there's a lot of people that watch online and they don't have the agenda, so bear with me on that. Our announcements, the fall leaf collection that began on Monday, October 20th, will end on Friday, November 21st. Leaves will be picked up Monday through Thursday from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. during this period. Due to the high demand, residents are encouraged to use biodegradable paper bags and place them at the curb. Loose leaves must be raked to the edge of the road and must not be placed on the road. Leaf piles containing grass, clippings, branches, or animal waste will not be collected. And leaves are not collected on Friday for routine road maintenance. The Ladies Auxiliary is sponsoring an Election Day bake sale at the Cecil Volunteer Station Number Three here on Miller's Run tomorrow. Hot food and baked goods will be available from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The Ladies Auxiliary is also sponsoring a family bingo at the Cecil Volunteer Fire Station Number Three at Miller's Run here on Sunday, November 9th. Doors open at 11:00 a.m. and bingo starts at 11:45 a.m. The kitchen is open at 11:00 a.m. Admission is $5 and includes 13 games. Children must be accompanied by an adult. There will be a Chinese auction, door prizes at a 50/50 game. Payout is $20 per game. Tickets are available at the door with cash only. Our municipal offices will be closed on Tuesday, November 11th, 2025, in observance of the Veterans Day holiday. Normal business hours will resume on Wednesday, November 12th at 8:00 a.m. Our Cecil Township Historical Society will meet on Wednesday, November 19th at 7:00 p.m. in this meeting room here. Their guest speaker will be a member, Jim Zamiska. Jim's presentation will be raised on tang, growing up in the 60s and 70s. Also, please join our Cecil Township Historic Society for their annual National Miners' Day Ceremony on Saturday, December 6th, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. at our Miners' Memorial in Cecil Park. It's a pavilion across the stream here behind this building. The Historic Society will pay tribute to our local miners, some or actually many of whom lost their lives in area mines. Refreshments will be served in the generations room following the seminar ceremony. The municipal offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 27th and 28th, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Normal business hours will resume at 8:00 a.m. on Monday, December 1st, 2025. Also, the 21st Annual Toys for Tots Drive will be on Saturday, December 6th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at the new Cecil Township Public Works Garage located up on Kungar Road. Please bring a new unwrapped toy valued at $5 or greater. Monetary donations are also accepted. Make checks payable to the Washington County Toys for Tots. Refreshments will be served, and Santa Claus will be there from 9:00 a.m. to noon. That's really interesting. Getting our resolutions 211-2025, it's to consider application 2025-0020 for the Spirit Reality Lot Line Revision Plan. The applicant is Schiffler &amp; Company for the Spirit Realty located at 1000 Park Drive in Lawrence.
This is the Black Box Property, formerly known as the Black Box Property. What they're doing is they're subdividing the property and they're creating Lot A1 and A2. The interesting thing about this is that they need to access the parking associated with Lot A1 through Lot A2. So, Planning Commission's recommendation, they put an easement up through here to reach that parking lot. This is parking on this side of the road. The buildings are here and up here. So, been reviewed by the Planning Commission. They've addressed all the technical comments. Our recommendation is to consider approving it tonight. Any questions? If there's anybody here in the audience tonight?
Was there any resistance to creating that right-of-way through there?
No, no, it's amicable. They're, you know, they're creating, it's my understanding that they may try to build something else back here on the vacant land.
All right.
So, it's got the possibility to grow.
If there are no questions, there are motion to approve this lot line revision?
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For number 212-2025, it's considered a reapproval of application number 2024-0007 for the Silver Creek Phases 1 and 2 subdivision plan, contingent upon furnishing adequate financial security as recommended by the Township Engineer. Applicant Silver Creek Land LLC, location at Silver Creek along Rising Road. It's an R2 medium-density residential zoning district. The plan received Board approval on March 4th, 2024, and reapproval is needed at this time for recording purposes.
Yeah, this is the plan for Phases 1 and 2. If you haven't been out there, they've already put in the culvert here and they have the roads starting across and into Phase 1 and Phase 2. This is just a re-recording of this. They started the work without having financial security in place. They had a developers agreement. They're able to do that under the municipality's planning code. They can do work. But we won't, the Board wouldn't, we wouldn't recommend signing the plan until they have financial security in place. They've given us an estimate of that financial security, and we'll assure that that's in place prior to anybody signing the actual plan. But it needs reapproved tonight based upon the changes that have been, minor changes that have been made to the plan, but it's essentially the same thing.
Motion to approve that change?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For 213-2025, it's to consider the full release of the financial security that was posted for the private improvements for the Universal Electric Corporation Phase 2 Parking Lot Extension. Total reduction of $124,850 upon satisfaction of any other payments due to the township as recommended by the Township Engineer.
Yeah, this is a small parking lot expansion they did over Universal. There's this little piece right here. It's complete. I had a photo of it, but I couldn't put my fingers on it. Just wanted to show the Board what you were approving tonight, so it's complete, and I'm making recommendation to approve the release of the funds.
Thank you, Dan. I have a motion to approve that...
Second.
Release. It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For item 214-2025, consider approval of change order 2 for the Contract A 2025 Pavement Maintenance Project through the Liquid Fuels Contract to Millian Millian Sons in the amount of $21,550 to complete micro milling on portions of Baker Road and O'Hare Road to address a loss of skid resistance in those areas that were last maintained by seal coating.
So, this is an area that was seal coated before. Due to the time of the year, there's not many options for addressing this. It is a concern. We would highly recommend completing this work. The good thing is that we're under budget on the paving contract this year. This amount that says 763, we'll look at another estimate here shortly. We're about $30,000 under the bid price of what we did for the paving contract already, so we would recommend this additional work, just from a safety standpoint. We're gonna have to look at something next year in these areas, just to make sure, because they were, they had tar and chip on them. What happens is over time that that bleeds through, and so certain areas, they've lost the skid resistance. And anything else to add on that?
Do we have a motion to approve that change order?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For item 215-2025, it's to consider application for payment number 3 for the Contract A 2025 Pavement Maintenance Project under Liquid Fuels to Millian Millian Sons in the amount of $27,851.44.
This is the pay estimate. As I said before, the total amount of work is 732, is bid at 763, so there's about $31,000 under contract. The project is complete. We're just holding retention now, just to get their final documents and maintenance bond and so forth. So we are recommending payment tonight in the amount of $27,851.44.
So, motion to approve that payment?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For number 216-2025, consider application for payment number 1 for the Coomer Road Realignment Project to Independent Enterprises in the amount of $274,319.65 for work completed to date.
Yeah, we would also make a recommendation on this payment. I have, I just threw a photo up there of the finished product. Independent Enterprises did a great job. They got in there, got this done super quick. We didn't have a long time down without buses having to make alternate routes and so forth, so worked out well. And as you can see, the project is complete, and we're making recommendation for payment.
We have a motion to approve that payment?
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved?
Aye, second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For item number 217-2025, it's to consider approval for construction of electrical, electric infrastructure to service the Iron Ridge Development. It will be owned by West Penn Power within the 50-foot right-of-way of Cowden Road, with final design and location to be approved by our Township Manager.
So... So, the Iron Ridge Development has been trying to finalize their utilities. West Penn Power came back to them and told them that they need to bring a new three-phase connection to the development. What that means is this is the, this is the cross-country power line right here in this location where you can kind of see this clearing on the picture. They have to drop a pole here off of and bring the service into the right-of-way of Cowden Road, and they need to bring the three-phase up. They're gonna bring it, as I understand it, in underground and bring it up to the development, and then it will be brought into the Iron Ridge Development, which is on this side of the plan. There was some confusion related to the width of the right-of-way of the road. Dawn Janus was able to find a plan back in the 1970s when the township actually took 50-foot all the way from Cowden, all the way up to the intersection past where Iron Ridge is. It's actually a 50-foot right-of-way. So, I just put this on your agenda because it really wasn't approved as a part of the Iron Ridge Plan, and if they're gonna be working in the township right-of-way, I just suggested that, you know, the final plan be approved by Dawn as the Township Manager for where they're gonna be in the right-of-way. Obviously, talk to Public Works and we'll review that, but this will kind of close out the last detail related to them getting started on the plan.
Is there a motion to approve the construction agreement?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Stay. You have that, Carol. I know you catch it all the time. I don't need to remind you. Our number 2218-2025, it's a motion to file complaint inequity and motion to seek equitable relief to abate code violations at 32nd Street in Lawrence. And again, that's what we described here. We hope that helps her out and maybe all the rest of the problems will go away. So is there a motion to approve?
Let me...
Wait, wait, hold it.
Before we go to motion, I just want to be clear that seeking equitable relief does include seeking leaning of the property.
Well, we have to do that if we spend money on...
I just want to make sure everyone is, it's clear.
I didn't hear what you said.
Seeking equitable relief includes seeking a lean on the property for any work that the township does. I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay, so in other words, if we get an exterminator in there, cleans everything up, who's reliable, I mean, who's liable for that?
The township leans the property owner.
Okay.
Leans the property.
But we're not doing that in Muse either. It is, like she said, it's more of a, I mean, they've spread out the whole area there. We need to exterminate it. I think that should be on us.
Say that again, Tom, sorry.
I said that should be on us.
What?
Paying for an exterminator to go in there.
Why?
Because, same problem like we have in Muse. I mean, we're trying to help clean up the neighborhood, the whole, like she said, the whole street is...
Can I ask for an executive session on this to get advice from Gretchen quickly?
That's not...
Please. I need to have... It'll be five minutes. I just want to ask Gretchen a question, and then we can come back. Can we do that?
We'll come back to this one.
Okay.
Our item number 219-2025, it's to consider authorizing the advertisement of an ordinance allowing a tax credit against an individual's liability imposed under Chapter 3 of the Local Tax Enabling Act for active service as volunteer, and a tax credit against real estate property tax to be granted to an active volunteer. Volunteer is a member of a volunteer fire company or a nonprofit emergency medical service agency. The scheduling of the vote on this ordinance is contingent upon successful completion of merger with the Cecil Township, or the merger of the Cecil Township Volunteer Fire Departments. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved?
I'll second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For item number 220-2025, it's to consider promotion of Jeff Huesman to Director of Public Works at an annual salary of $105,000 through December 2026, with an effective date of Tuesday, November 4th.
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion, pardon me?
No.
Motion carries for to one, Carol. For item number 221-2025, consider the request of Diamond Divas to install dugouts at the Lawrence Park. As you're aware, the Diamond Divas, they're seven, eight-year-old girls softball team. They also work with an 11-year-old girl softball team, so it's a lot of girls involved in that, and that field is starting to shape up, and we've done some drainage work, and they're actually, at their expense, are gonna be, wanna put dugouts in there.
Would other people be able to use them? Like, does it give them an exclusivity right at Lawrence Park?
I mean, to use the dugouts? No, nothing exclusive.
Okay.
They'd have priorities if they're scheduling games and things like that.
But like, they can't put it in and then take exclusive use of Lawrence Park, right?
No, no, they're not asking for that.
They wouldn't, Jack? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve that dugout installation?
So moved.
At their cost?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Consider the 2222-2025, consider the Board of Supervisors meeting minutes from the Monday, October 6th, 2025, regularly monthly meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved? And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item number 223-2025, consider the general fund invoices from October 1st through October 31st, 2025.
So moved.
It's been moved? And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Yeah, well, before we go, we just, we need a couple minutes and an executive session to discuss that issue in Lawrence. Please stand by for us.
Yeah, I mean, we have maps of the, I mean, the big issue, the big thing was the sewers back in the east. We did the sewers, and, I mean, we have some of the older township, I think they have a...
That's what I'm looking for, like your township maps.
Yeah.
And stuff like that.
Yeah, there's at least one old township map.
Did you be able to get us a copy?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're blocking that effort that's stored.
Okay, yeah. I'll see what we have in the way of like any other historical things. I mean, you know, nowadays, everybody scans things in.
Right, right.
And we did...
Somebody that can do the scans, but that's not me.
Right, but we already have them all scanned.
Oh, okay, that'd be great.
So I can just get it from Jack.
Yeah, he can get it, because he's our vice president, so that'd be perfect.
Okay, sure.
Thanks.
And there's a nursery?
No, on the other side. There's a nice little cherry. How long? I know they have lots of...
Both?
And that they have the walking trail, so they're entering that night.
And you're at the end of...
I'm on the...
Oh, yeah, they're not, they're not, they're in, they're not on. Coming in with the bomb.
No, but they said that they wanted that walking trail to come down so that I could...
Oh, yeah.
People who might live in the neighborhood have access to their...
To their trail? Oh, that's news to me. I mean, I don't, I don't, I think their trail, their trail goes on the backside. They did have a trail planned, but I can't remember exactly where it was. The only thing that I recall being approved, you know, related to all of them, was they had to do some additional landscaping, some of the lots, and all even do things that all through this particular phase.
It was just so they don't, you know, if they do have a walking trail with the wardrobes.
I don't know.
Because I know they're very close to my...
Sure.
I don't want them...
That's the noise basically. I'll look up the argument, I gotta get, I gotta get on to my computer and work. Everything's a major, we got convenience, but we got security. I'll call over. Oh.
My daughter's...
She thought this was amazing?
Yeah.
Robert Meaw? It's Carmichael.
Is that true?
Yeah.
He came to appropriate, he was struggling out in the... But I just want to... Sometimes things get... Okay, yeah, that's just...
About Tuesday. Yeah, I'm just like, okay. I don't know, explain. See, I have a big, it was an approved, that was approved as a part of, I think all PRD. I've seen it. There was a master plan, it was true, I believe the master plan shows the truth. Miracle now, all the information at your fingertips. Right, I mean, it is impossible. Works on right.
Right.
Oh. Can I find out when can? That's a there she is. I don't. And it's okay with, you know, I don't wanna be...
Well, I'm off the board this year, so coming in, coming next year, I won't know.
And you're, what's your last name again?
Campbell.
No Greg Rundike? Trail that they show is... In the moment, it's not opposite to you, it's, yeah, it's tight, it's tight along here, I don't, I don't see a trail, I mean, they have signs on those sides of the streets. They do have a trail, but it's more like, like a loop trail that goes along multiple other properties, far away too. At least for fear that, uh, opposite to Paulies, Georges, Williams, and sometimes their properties. Here and I talked. So. I know this is small, but I can pull it up a little bit here, so you can see it. So here's your property right here, right? Yeah, that's you. That's you, okay? And then there's a fifty-foot buffer here, okay? And the trail is way back here, here's your property. Yeah, so it's, it's away from you.
Okay, when you showed that diagram, it kind of looked like there was something coming down, maybe it was...
Yeah, it had nothing to do, they would've never established the trail there. It's, it's just, it's all on what they call open space, this is all open space that'll never be built.
These are all homes there.
Correct, yes. Yeah, but, I mean, they're gonna be, elevation-wise, they're gonna be way up on top of it. And they're still gonna be, they're still gonna be undisturbed buffer between the properties, yeah. You're gonna do the help. And I think we, I think we made, I think, there was additional planning. There was one, there was one. Talk to Zach, you know, because I don't want anything to... Yeah, well, I mean, at least there were notes on there that they had, they had to do that.
Because I think I'm the closest, well, I guess my neighbor is close to me.
Yes.
My brother is on the other side, and he knows the gas line goes.
Okay. And your house is closer, is it closer to the road? Oh, right here.
Yeah.
Right, probably right up in there. Oh. Yep, okay.
Well, thank you so much.
Yeah, I think you'd be fine. Do you have any, any issues, like, you know, like Jack and I, like, talking? Developers are really good, yeah, I mean, he lives in the township, so, you know, he's, he's very... Okay, sure. Okay. I didn't even think about it. Okay, right.
Thanks.
Thank you for indulging us. For item number two eighteen dash twenty twenty-five, it's a motion to file complaint inequity and motion to seek equitable relief to abate code violations at Thirty Second Street in Lawrence. And again, as our solicitor said, that that is leaning the property, as money is spent. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No, Carol passes four to one. For our general, our citizens' comments, anybody have general comments or questions, any general subject? Kathy?
Hello, what are you in board? I just want to say, I've lived in Cecil for thirty-three years, and prior, I was in a surrounding area. And most people that have mortgages, if you still have a mortgage, probably don't really pay too much attention to your mortgage when it goes up every year. And that's because your taxes, your insurances, and so it's all lumped in there together. And so you don't know what's going up, you know, which taxes, and I've been here for thirty-three years. And I don't know, Tom, you've been on the board for a long time. I don't know if the taxes have gone up maybe once or twice, I don't think, you can probably verify that. We have no control over our school board and county. Cecil has no control over that, that's their own thing. Our township taxes have stayed pretty level, and I just want to thank this board and all the boards that go back thirty-three years. Okay, you do a good job, believe me, my husband was on school board for several years back. And it's very, very difficult not to raise taxes, because everything goes up, as we know, everything goes up every year, your insurance, everything. And for Cecil, for you guys to keep everything intact, that is something to be very proud of. Thank you.
Kathy, we need your address for the record, please.
Forty-eight Ridgewood Drive.
Thank you, Kathy.
It's McDonald's, but I live in Cecil.
Anybody else?
So, first off, really quick, I want to thank every person that was involved from the beginning to the end on getting the Meals to Go program back going, after having personal meetings with Mary Harris from Area of Agent, Aging, Agency on Aging, Aging Services of Washington County, Mary Link. And special thanks to Frank, who showed up to the meeting, and Frank, I forget the other lady's name that was there with Orte, and Mayor Rome. So that was the beginning of it, and there was a lot of hands in it, and just thank you guys so much, because that's an important... The Meals to Go program is an important program in our township and in southwestern Pennsylvania, so thank you. Now on to the fun part. So I have a question about how formal letters are handled when we write a formal letter of complaint to the board, as my understanding, it goes to Dawn, Dawn then gives it to you. Sent one in on the twenty-fourth of October, nothing came of it, not even a, hey, I've received your letter, that ought to be the minimum. Then I resent it on the twenty-eighth, again, no, I talked to you about the issue the night that that happened from the last month's meeting. And at this point, I want to know what's gonna be done with her. Because for her to say what she said, it's on camera, and if I can say it, or if she can say it, I'll say it, she told me to fuck off and to shut the fuck up while I was speaking. Under the Sunshine Act, that is not allowed. Under the municipality oath that she takes to be a supervisor, that is not allowed through your own H R department and your own handbooks. So something needs to be done. I want a written and an oral apology from Darling Barney, I think that's the least that can happen. If that happens tonight, we'll leave it. If not, then we'll go the next step. I prefer the township to handle this. But if you think it's a joke, or, you know, whatever, then it, somebody has to put her under control. From grabbing Cindy, what she does in our township...
We understand the point.
Somebody has to do something about Darling Barney.
We will give you a written response, and there'll be a resolution.
When? I mean, it's been a month.
Well, I didn't plan on doing anything about it, but I will now, since you're actually making it as a motion.
Why would you not want to do something about it, Tom?
Well, we've talked about it, but...
Did you express anything with me, the person who she offended?
We're not gonna express anything to you, but I said, well...
Why not? How can you not involve me in whatever you do with her when the offense was against me and against a taxpaying voter, citizen of Cecil Township?
You will be involved.
That's unacceptable.
You will be involved, but give, I'll make sure you get a formal response, and see if you're satisfied.
Okay, well, my, my legal team said that if after tonight, you refuse to address her openly, then it goes to the next step, which I was hoping would not have to happen, but if you're just gonna give me an arbitrary day, someday down the road, you'll get back in touch with me, that's unacceptable.
Before the next meeting.
About a whole nother month.
All right. The words aren't gonna go away.
No, but you could, a modest...
All right, okay, all right. I promised...
You have the ability as the chair to do that.
I promise you, we'll give a formal response. Anybody else have any general comments? I do have to bring up one thing, we talked about solar ordinance, Dan and I have a model ordinance to present, and I asked the board if they had any, could look at it and have any other comments and things like that. The only suggestions I received were that the ordinance, it's a general model ordinance for a solar, as a solar ordinance. The comments are, if we make it as a conditional use, then each, it can be a case-by-case basis, based on the location and things like that. So I'm gonna have it on the, or I'm gonna call for a hearing, for a public hearing on that solar ordinance as we proposed it. And again, it'd be advertised as under a conditional use, and then, like I said, we'll take comments from the residents. But again, with short of any other kind of comments, we have that model ordinance, it's basic, but it covers most of the things we think needed to be covered. And I will said before we leave, that I will set a date for that hearing on it. We also probably have to finish up that M U C zoning ordinance, there are amendments to it. We had some residents here last time, they made some suggestions and comments, some of them were good comments, but their comments were geared to assuming it's gonna be right next to them. And I think the ordinance itself has, can stand on its own merits, the way we made the amendments. I think the issue is that is the board really interested in changing that zoning on that particular property? We can't mix the two, I mean, a request to have your property rezoned by that neighbor in, along the state road, him requesting that, it doesn't really have anything to do with whether we adopt an amendment to our M U C ordinance. So the thing is, I think we have to also have a hearing for that one also, to finish it off, to adopt that ordinance. And also, you know, we can make a decision anytime if we, anybody's interested in following up on that zoning or the rezoning request. We don't have to do anything with it, we can deny it, but it's not automatic that if we approve it, that zoning gets approved for that property owner that wants to put in a bake shop and a, probably a B and B. So I'm just saying, we'll just have a hearing on it, and just keep in mind, the request for a zoning change is separate, it's a whole separate issue. Anybody else have any old business that...
I have a couple of things. We need to set budget meetings for the month of November. Do you want to set dates for those now, or...
Yeah, we're gonna do before Thanksgiving time, and then we have to adopt it by the thirtieth, the preliminary budget.
Right, because we have to advertise it for thirty days.
Any Mondays are good?
I'm fine with Mondays.
Second or third Monday, can Cindy be ready for that?
She's ready.
She's ready now?
Yeah, she is.
All right.
So can we do, hold on, I have to go back.
I'm gonna pull my calendar too.
Me too.
And anybody else can weigh in on if Mondays are good for you? Two Mondays from now, that's...
The seventeenth, but, okay. You want to do Monday, November seventeenth?
Let me just bring it up.
At seven P M. Um, that will be fine, yeah, I can send you here.
Seven P M on the seventeenth.
Okay.
All right, anybody have an issue with that date? Seven P M. And then the hearings, we need forty-five days of notice to the Washington County Planning Commission and to the Cecil Township Planning Commission. That would take us right through on Thanksgiving, I mean, forty-five days, that's almost close to the Christmas season. How about if we do the plan on one at the beginning of January? Let me look at January date, calendar also. On January fifth, we'll have a reorganizational meeting, then immediately followed a business meeting. That meeting is usually short. We try to have one after the public meeting, our January meeting, that's usually a short one. Because these are kind of, uh... Yeah, immediately following the business meeting. Everybody okay with that?
When? January.
Yeah, forty-five days takes us right to Christmas.
Yeah, that works.
And we won't get out of the meeting. Pardon me?
Do it after the next meeting, January.
All right, all right, so we'll set that date and do it immediately following that January meeting.
Can I bring up a couple of quick things? Ms. Rollin brought up, I wanted to point out that we've gotten two grants this month. One was through the, with State Rep Jason Ortizai's office, through the Area Agency on Aging for the Meals to Go Program. Supervisor Agizio was very helpful with that, he was the lead on that. And it came from the state budget, Area Agency on Aging, and E Q T, so very grateful for those things. It allows residents who can't or stay or want to take food home to somebody that's homebound, that they can do that. The second grant that we got was a five thousand dollar grant that I got through Arc Randolph and Associates. It's for the fire department, it's for two Sensic Gold G two multi-gas detectors, which detect natural gas, carbon monoxide, and hydrogen sulfide. And very grateful for that partnership and that grant. As soon as we purchase them, there'll be a photo op, you're welcome, with you guys for that. One more quick announcement, there's, we're with Southbridge G M S, holding again reminder, the CPR class on December fourteenth. One P M is hands-only CPR, and on, at three P M on December fourteenth. I say it all the time, know what to do. Today, my neighbor told me, she's a teacher at South Central, one of her students choked on a cheese stick, and somebody had to do the Heimlich. Know what to do in an emergency. Do not rely on calling nine-one-one, know how to do the Heimlich, know how to do CPR, I cannot say it enough. You could literally save someone's life. It takes an hour or less, depending on how much we talk, to learn hands-only CPR. And to get certified, it's about two hours. It's worth the reassurance to know what to do in that emergency, and it's free. Thank you to the partnership with Southbridge G M S, there's absolutely no cost to the taxpayers, so, and bring students. There were, what, two younger kids, I think, in the last class? Bring teenagers, you're not too young to learn how, to know what to do in an emergency.
She's also saying, not only know what to do, but don't depend on somebody else, or hope somebody else is gonna do it.
Right.
Tom, I had one more thing.
Sure.
I guess about a month ago, I mentioned at Dawn about, we've been having a...